White supremacist Randy Weaver is another. And then there are the perennial irritants, taxes and gun control.
I think Adolf Hitler was, had the first gun control. I think Adolf Hitler's group is the ones who denied freedom of speech. And what are they doing now?
Art Bean insists the minority points of view that he and his militia colleagues hold, like equating Uncle Sam and Der Fuhrer, don't make them potential terrorists. Mary Lee Muska agrees.
Well, in the first place, our members are the general population. If anyone were to come up and say, "Are you a militia member?", I would say, "Yes." I'm not ashamed of that. It is my constitutional right, as it is yours.
But in Sanellac County, most people have no desire to join the militia.
I wouldn't say this area is anti-government at all. You have your people who have been upset with the high rate of taxation. You have your farmers who are upset maybe with increasing government regulations, you know, this sort of thing. But I don't think that you have a quote-unquote "anti-government" feeling.
Those who have that feeling spread it through the sophisticated use of modern communications technologies, satellite dishes, computers and shortwave radio networks. One movement watcher says this technology has helped to affect a remarkable and dangerous evolutionary growth in just the past few election cycles.
I see a large populist revolt from the right in America that has led people to look at Ross Perot and Jerry Brown and Patrick Cannon and David Duke. And I see then a patriot movement coming out of that, an armed militia coming out of that, and then the terrorist undergrounds coming out of that.
When this town first became a news dateline, the journalistic instinct was to ask why, why Decker? As if something about the water or the people here linked them to the worst crime in American history. But now that we know a little more about Decker and a lot more about the high-tech communications and cross-country travels of the most violent members of America's populist nationalist movement, the question has changed from why to how. How will Decker, how will America deal with these murderous divisions in our ranks? I'm Dave Marish for Nightline in Decker, Michigan.
And now we're joining you live. And I'd like to begin by asking you a general question to which I would ask you just to raise your hands. How many of you agree with the notion, or even the suspicion, that the federal government might in some way have been involved in the bombing in Oklahoma City? I'm trying to be fair. It looked to me as though maybe, what, ten, twelve, fifteen people? You kind of put your hand up. Why do you think that? I mean, it's a dreadful, dreadful thing to think about our government, isn't it? Why do you believe it?
Look at Waco. Look at what they did to that man up in the hills. How can you shoot a woman and a child? There's gotta be a way to deal with it. There's been police officers that have felt threatened and they shoot an individual when there's how many police officers around? What's going on with our country? Why?
Is it just me, or do you not see that there would be a world of difference between, and let's set aside whatever differences you and I might have about Waco. But in Waco, there was a situation where David Korish and the Branch Davidians had, in effect, barricaded themselves in a building. They were known to have a lot of weapons. Set aside whatever you may feel about them personally, they were refusing to come out, and they had children. It seems to me there was a world of difference between what happened on that day and the idea of parking a truck filled with 4,000 pounds of explosives in front of a federal building that has men, women and children inside? Or am I missing your point?
Well, when you're dealing with people, you deal with them as people, not as cattle or whatever. And they're trying to cover up things, it looks like to me.
All right, I'll tell you what, we're gonna take a break now, and when we come back, I'm gonna start with a subject that I think you may feel a little more comfortable with and I will feel less comfortable with. How you feel the media has mishandled the story of Decker, Michigan. We'll be back with that story in just a moment.
This ABC News Town Meeting: Trouble in the Heartland. Brought to you by Ford and your Ford dealer. We'll continue in a moment, live from the Decker United Methodist Church in Decker, Michigan.
What did they say to get you to leave AT&amp;T?
Heard about the big savings I can get you...
Wednesday on ABC. Deal about life in the public eye.
This has really gotten out of hand.
The Barbara Walters special, The Price of Fame, now on Wednesday.
It isn't just anyone who can set up a deal in Toshkent, or Almaty, or Istanbul, or Bombay. And it certainly isn't just any...
This ABC News Town Meeting: Trouble in the Heartland continues live from the United Methodist Church in Decker, Michigan. Once again, Ted Koppel.
I suggested that some of you may have felt misused by the media over these past few days. And I also suggested to you that when we came back from the break, I'd give you a chance to express some of those frustrations. Mr. Bean, I understand you want to say something.
Yes, my name is Art Bean, and I'm with the Tuscula County militia. I've had several interviews with the press since then, and even with your people that just ran the promotion for the entry here.
Indeed, we saw you at the beginning of this program.
The portrayal of us being supremacists or some other thing than what we are is kind of angering a lot of people.
Let me just stop you for one second, because I want to be sure we're talking about the same thing. Nobody said anything in Dave Marish's piece, that I recall, about you being a supremacist or anything like that.
That's correct, but what was the intro and the last part of your entry there?
Had nothing to do with anyone being a supremacist?
Not being a supremacist, but that has been mentioned many times. What I'm talking about is putting the light, maybe I'm not making myself clear, putting the light on others than what we are. We are Americans. We believe in free speech. We believe in the Constitution, and we believe in the rights of other people. That's not being portrayed by the media in any portion of this.
Let me go one step further. I hear what you're saying, and I can understand. This is, I mean, this has to have been a shattering experience for this small community. I mean, all of a sudden, to have the full glare of the whole nation's attention on you. Do you think the media is doing it deliberately, or do you just think it's shabby journalism, that we're not doing our jobs well? And there's a difference, in other words, between being incompetent and being malicious. Which do you think we are?
Half the time, I think it's just maliciousness, and half the time, I think it's just incompetence.
What do you think we're out to do? In other words, when you say maliciousness suggests that we have some goal in mind, do you think that the media in general is out to blacken this town's name?
Maybe not the town, but some of the people in it. That's the feeling we have heard in Tuscula and Sanellac County.
Is that a feeling that anyone else here shares? Ma'am, you're shaking your head. Sarah, maybe you just passed the microphone over. And if you wouldn't mind, would you stand up and give your name, please?
Nancy Adams. I was upset with the way little things, little negative things were brought out and really played up on television.
Like?
I'd rather not discuss that, but no, just, I noticed with several of the news, I knew several of the people that were interviewed, and it was, there could be just one little bad thing in the sentence, and that was played upon. And I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair that the media judge a person.
Now, who do you think has been judged? You're talking about the Nichols brothers and Jim McVeigh?
Tim McVeigh.
Tim McVeigh, I beg your pardon.
I'm talking primarily about the Nichols brothers.
Yeah. These are your neighbors?
Yes.
You know them?
Yes.
You like them?
Yes.
You cannot believe that they would have had anything to do with something like that?
No, I can't.
Had you ever, I mean, last Friday, when I spoke to one of your other neighbors, and clearly a number of other people have told the story of James Nichols in particular, expressing, and this gentleman before the program corrected me, and I'm grateful to him for doing it, it wasn't a question of James Nichols saying that he wanted to kill President Clinton, but that President Clinton ought to be killed. Is that a fair way of stating it?
Quote-unquote, "He isn't fit to live, let alone be president."
Okay, he isn't fit to live. And that, and thank you for correcting the quote. Is that appropriate?
No, but at one point, excuse me, at one point or another in our life, we all say things that you don't mean, and you might have the wrong person pick up on that. When I took psychology in college, it says the worst thing to do is get angry. You say things you don't mean, and feelings are hurt.
Can you understand how the, no, let's stay on the media for a while. Can you understand, I'm coming in here as a reporter, okay? I don't know any of you. And I hear, on the one hand, here's a man who says President's not fit to live. On the other hand, I'm hearing that he and his brother and McVeigh have been experimenting with little bombs. Then we discover that Mr. McVeigh was apparently in some way connected, at least that is the charge that is being leveled against him. I'm not asking you to render a judgment in journalism here, but can you see why that story interests us and why that is a subject of some interest to the rest of the country?
Oh, yes, I can see that.
But you think it's unfair?
I can look at the money aspect of it, hey, this is a big headline. But then I can look at the harm that it can do if this big headline isn't the truth.
Let me just, there was a young man in the back who had raised his hand. Do you have a microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, jump in.
My name's Ben Hobbs. I think, for the most part, the media's done a good job in covering this. The only problem I have is that the radical right, in many ways by some editorial people, is being compared to the moderate or mainstream conservatives. The Republicans are, for the most part, in a way against the federal government in that we think they spend too much or they tax us too much. But I'm involved in the Republican Party, and I've never heard it suggested that we bomb a federal building or anything like that. So I think that the comparison between those two groups is unfair and sometimes misleading.
No, I think you're absolutely right. And I think we have to be very clear that when we are talking about, it's not fair to talk about conservatism, republicanism, as though it were interchangeable with the extreme right wing. And it is, you know, I do want to focus a little bit while we're here this evening on the extreme right wing. I see you shaking your head. Are you just agreeing with something I'm saying, or?
Everything.
Well, go ahead. Jump on into the conversation.
I'm Representative Kim Reed, and I just, I don't understand, one thing I don't understand is why some of these faction groups feel so threatened by their government. I understand the Waco problems. I understand some of the other problems that the government maybe has delved into.
Let me just clarify, this is your region?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, you know, but I think the last election, if it didn't teach us anything, it should have taught us that people in this country still have the ability, through the ballot box, to completely change the direction that their government goes. And in this state, I would hope that the last two or three years of us in this state would show that we will listen as elected officials, and we can change the way we do business. And I just hope that we're not heading into a series of time here where instead of making change with ballots, that we make them with bombs. I really fear that, you know, I hope this isn't the beginning of that. And I guess that's the big question that I've had. And I've met with some of the "we the people" groups and that in this area and discussed this with them. That's the one thing. The other point, if I could, just briefly.
Sure.
I can't criticize the media very much with their coverage. I understand the pressures they're under to deliver stories. It is agonizing sometimes when they report something and you find out that it's wrong. But the one thing I would like to say is, if there, I fear that the image of the people in Sanellac County, to the people who watch TV, is that, you know, we're all a bunch of, you know, off-the-wall people who, you know, condone these type things. Obviously, almost everyone who lives here, as your beginning said, are hard-working, honest, good people. And I just would hope that that's the image that America sees of the people that live in my district, because I've represented them for a few years now. There's no finer people on the face of the earth.
Well, and for the rest of this program, it's our aim to get to meet as many of them as possible. Now, as I say, we invited members of the Michigan militia here, and I've spoken to these gentlemen beforehand. We're gonna try and keep the emphasis on these folks, and a little less time with you. But I did promise you, you would have a chance to say anything you want to say.
You were asking about anger towards the media.
Yes.
And I think as we talk about what's going on in America, we've got two emotions we're dealing with, anger and fear. And in most instances, we deal with them a little bit differently. My anger is towards the media. Now, when I explain the anger, I also have to explain how I'm gonna respond to that anger because of who I am. Again, I'm Ray Southwell, Chief of Staff with the Michigan Militia Corps. We have irresponsible journalism occurring in this country against the Michigan Militia Corps. We need to expose it. That's how, I'm angry at that, and I will make every attempt to expose it. That's how I'm dealing with that anger.
Ray, you're waving Time Magazine around. Get to the point. What is it you're gonna, what is it you want to say about that?
I'm not gonna...
All right.
There's things in that magazine...
Well, I mean, when you're holding a magazine up, I'm assuming you're gonna make a point about it.
It's on the ground.
All right.
I'm trying to expose that that particular irresponsible magazine has written things that were untrue about the Michigan Militia Corps.
Let's be specific, because you and I, you and I chatted before the program, and I told you, I have no objection if you want to show the picture. There's one picture of...
Let me finish first, dealing with the anger, then I can go back with that, because, again, I'm angry, so I'm dealing with the anger by exposing it. That's how I'm dealing with the anger. I want to make sure that's clear. I'm also angry at the Southern Poverty Law Center for what they've put out, because they've painted all militias or any civilians in camouflage with the same brush. There's no documentation of any racism in the Michigan Militia Corps, but the Southern Poverty Law Center has gone on record that there is. I'm gonna, I'm angry at them, but I'm gonna respond in an appropriate way, because there will be a lawsuit brought against them. So that's the anger that I feel, okay? But there's also fear, and we respond differently with the fear. And when you start talking about fear, then I'd like to talk again. Now, would you like me to clarify?
No, very good. Actually, I would just like to identify your commander, who's sitting next to you, Mr. Olson, if you'd just be good enough to stand up for a second, and we'll give you a chance to talk just a little bit later. But I just want folks to know that you're here. And there was a gentleman over here who raised his hand. You have a mic? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, it is on?
Yes, it is. Mr. Olson, I'll come to you a little bit later. Thank you.
My name is Al Squire, and I hear your anger, but I also have anger for what happened in Oklahoma City. And I hear us talking about Waco, and I hear us talking about comparisons between that and what happened in Oklahoma City.
May I just ask you, are you from Decker?
No, sir. I'm from Sandusky, about 10 miles away.
Okay.
And I just, I think the nation needs to know that there's a lot of us here that are extremely upset about what happened in Oklahoma City. And all these other things about being angry against the government, there's no excuse for what happened there. And if somebody from our community or our county were responsible for doing that, then they have to pay the price for that. And I think, I don't know where we all stand, but I believe that's how many of us in Sanellac County feel.
All right, we're gonna take a short break. When we come back, I'd like to pick up a point that was made just a little bit earlier, because I find it a fascinating one. And that is the notion that if ever the change of government by peaceful election was demonstrated, it would seem to me that that was the case just a few months ago, last November. And why this level of frustration should be rising now, I don't quite understand, but I'm sure that some of you will explain it to me. I'll be back in just a moment.
This ABC News Nightline Town Meeting will continue in a moment.
Thing of waterproofing breakthrough.
Thompson's Water Seal Ultra Waterproofer.
Ultra powerful.
The best multi-surface waterproofer you...
From Meeting: Trouble in the Heartland continues live from the Decker United Methodist Church in Decker, Michigan. Once again, Ted Koppel.
If ever the American public demonstrated its capacity to throw the rascals out by peaceful means, it did so last November. I mean, you created a revolution. And everyone's been talking about it, and everyone's been writing about it. And what I do not understand is why, in the wake of that, there should be such a feeling of frustration, of continuing frustration, with the government. Doesn't our system, hasn't it just demonstrated to all of us? Haven't we demonstrated to ourselves how well the system works? Anyone want to take me on on that? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Charles Spatesel, and I don't fully agree with some of the stuff Kim said, that, you know, like, we were able to rectify a lot of things by the election. I said, some of the, oh, like, out in Washington, where they elected, or put in term limits in Washington State, and then we had, like, Tom Foley and some of the other elected officials try to challenge that in court, or like, in California, Proposition 187, where state officials, state employees, said they weren't going to comply with it. And like I say, it's kind of left in limbo. I says, the voters elect, vote on something, the majority says they want to do something, and then it turns around. I says, you know, lawyers and judges and stuff derail what people want to have done. Another case in the state of Michigan, where a few years back, we said we didn't want to pay for Medicaid-funded abortions. But just recent, a few months ago, President Clinton was trying to force our governor, by means of holding up Medicaid funding and stuff, to supply these, you know, or do, turn around and go against what the people of our state decide that we didn't want to spend our money on.
So you have a sense that, on the one hand, the public expresses its view, you put the people that you want in Congress, and then unfair means are used to undermine what you sent them there to do?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else feeling that way? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Xenobod, and I get around the state, give a lot of seminars and things like that. I see a lot of frustration with our government. And when you say there was a revolution, that now we've got new changes, and everybody sits back to look and see what these changes are going to be. And to get back to the first question, do they believe that the government is maybe conspiring behind this Oklahoma theory? We're seeing a lot of evidence that possibly. We go back to a lot of innocent people that have died throughout the United States, and we have a lot of questions. And that starts back around Wounded Knee, where they had military hardware out there, not only Waco, but there was a Don Scott, there's Gordon Cale. And we have a lot of questions. We say, why is this happening? Why did that blow up the way it did? We don't know who's behind it, we don't condone it, and we certainly want to see the people punished who's responsible for it. But at the same time, there's been a lot of murders in our nation, and I don't know who's behind it. We can see our government running around with masks on their heads. This scares the American people. Just like they said, how many vehicles come out here to James Nichols' farm, and you're saying, well, he played with explosive. My children played with explosive. They just, it's natural for people to experiment, they hear about this, and to try and say there's a conspiracy about this farming community tied him.
Hold on just one second. No, 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 I mean, stand up. I don't want to take the mic away from you. Nobody, nobody came out. And, I mean, you know, the federal authorities, the local authorities, didn't come here to James Nichols' farm when he was playing around with those, experimenting with those little bottle bombs before. They only came out after, and as of the time that we went on the air, the number now, incidentally, is up to 96 dead, and they're probably gonna find lord knows how many more dead. They came out and they looked at the farm, and they looked at Mr. Nichols' property, and they talked to people about what he had done, because the material used in the bomb seems to bear some similarity to the kind of bomb that was used in Oklahoma City. Now, look me in the eye and tell me that you really believe that our federal government, men and women that we elected, were directly responsible for the bombing of the federal building in Oklahoma? Do you really countenance that as a possibility?
I don't know who's manipulating our government. When you say "our government," I see so much de facto in our government now, that they're separating, just like the local sheriff and the local community. You see the FBI come in and take over the sheriff's department through these grants and things like that. There is a lack of communication between men and women, their nation and their everyday people.
Wait a second, the local sheriff is here, isn't he? Where's the sheriff?
Yes, he's right here.
Sheriff. Would you mind passing the mic to the sheriff for one second? Sheriff, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I seem to be on that quite often.
Your fellow citizens obviously had enough confidence to elect you to be on the spot, and quite clearly you can handle it. Is it your impression that when the federal authorities came in here, that they sort of rolled all over you?
Well, I think the comment that the gentleman made was that they take you over by giving you grant money.
Yeah.
I don't believe it was that they took over on this case.
I understand, no, but I was just, when they came here just a few days ago, and I assume there is still some federal authorities around here, did they treat you with proper respect? Or did you feel that in some way you were mishandled by the federal authorities?
I don't feel that I was personally mishandled with authorities. What we have to understand here, that this case has been assigned by the President of the United States to be investigated by the FBI. It's their case.
Right.
It's done under federal law.
Right.
Our local prosecutor is not issuing warrants, the federal government is. There's a matter of jurisdiction here, and that's properly recognized as part of our government.
But there's nothing wrong with that, right?
Certainly not.
I mean, that's the way the system is set up.
In some cases, as long as the law's being followed and as long as the Constitution's being followed. Certainly, they can't go in there without due process and execute a search warrant without having one.
Right.
Due process has to be followed in all cases. We're very cognizant of that on the local level. I found, at least what I saw, and I certainly didn't see everything that went on, that due process, meaning search warrants, were properly obtained in this case. Now, you know, the response, you know, with the media and so on, and I don't want to change the subject, Ted, but...
No, that's all right. Anywhere you like.
I think that it's a little premature, at this point in time, to say that all three of these men are connected with this case.
Oh, and indeed, two of them have not been connected with the case.
Two have not been charged.
You're quite right. The Nichols brothers have not been charged with being directly connected with the case.
And I think that we need to afford due process before we convict in our minds or anywhere else across the nation. Certainly, the tragedy, and that's all it can be described as, that happened in Oklahoma City. I don't believe there's a person in this building tonight, and I won't speak for everyone, but that doesn't feel that, once that due process is served, and the individuals have been adjudicated as guilty, that are caught, that there should not be punishment handed out to them. But the process has to be done through adjudication, not through the media or through whatever sense it is. And I know that the media doesn't portray themselves as that. But we need to hold individuals responsible for their actions, not groups, and paint them with a broad brush.
Right.
Not citizens of an area, and paint us with a bad brush, us, because I'm part of this, and not religions, not nations.
Mr. Olson, this makes a nice segue to you, because, A, yours clearly, the Michigan militia is one of the groups that it could be said has been painted with a brush. And also, my understanding is that you're feeling, in fact, you've told me so, that the only appropriate legal authority is the sheriff, right?
I would agree with that, yes.
You're not gonna read me anything, are you?
No, no.
No, okay.
This is a letter I received, a letter I received today. It only has two lines on it. It comes from Tulsa, Oklahoma. "We are coming for you. Pray for your soul. Thank you, media."
Mr. Olson, let me just interrupt you for one brief moment, and we will, we are gonna have to go to a commercial in a second. We'll come back, and you can speak again. I can show you a dozen letters like that, that I receive every week of my life. You know, there are a lot of fruitcakes out there. I'm sorry that you receive letters like that, but believe me, I routinely package them and send them off to the FBI. and send them off to the FBI. Go, go ahead, if you want to, if you want to get up and respond to me, uh...
Can I respond?
Go ahead.
All right. When I talked earlier, we were talking about two different feelings, anger and fear.
Right.
I don't believe the people that I know, and the people that I'm familiar with in the Michigan militia corps, are angry so much at our government. We're fearful of our government. We're fearful of the terrorism going on in the American people.
Very good point. Hold, hold the thought, I'm going to come back to you, we're going to take a short break. When we come back, we will discuss the issue of why anyone in this country needs to be afraid of its own government.
This ABC News Nightline Special Edition, Trouble in the Heartland, will continue in a moment.
There's a rumor. One of the big houses just entered the bidding against us for Marcus Belfry's next book.
Alan's with him now. Let's email him.
Done.
Now, let's fax him.
Done.
Better page.
Done.
How about Carrie Pigeon?
Message MCI. Email. In the...
Let me just explain to you, this is a shot of the house next door, and we are, we are shooting in there, I must tell you, with the permission of the owners of the house, just to prove to you that not everyone from Decker is here tonight, but I think, I think most everybody is, and, and folks who are not are watching the program on television tonight. I promised you that you would have an opportunity to explain why it is that you fear your government.
You know, we could probably explain a lot, but let's take a look at Randy Weaver. Randy Weaver was acquitted of all charges, he was set up by the federal government. That frightens the American public.
Explain who Randy Weaver was.
Randy Weaver was a gentleman, and I understand him to be a white separatist from Idaho. His wife and his son are dead. The federal government set him up. That frightens the American public. You, when you showed your opening piece, didn't show that he was acquitted, and walk, show him walking out of the courthouse a free man, you showed him in handcuffs, and the news media continues to do that.
Whoa, 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 we didn't show, we didn't show Randy Weaver at all. We showed Randy Weaver? I'm sorry, I guess I wasn't watching closely enough.
So, because of the fear of our federal government, the militias are rising up all over the country to defend our homes and properties. The Michigan militia corps has instituted, initiated the Sheriff's Empowerment Act in the states. States are rising up, they have passed Tenth Amendment resolutions telling our federal government to cease and desist. We want our state legislatures to put teeth into that and empower our elected sheriffs. Our sheriffs are our first line of defense. They're the only police agency that is responsible directly to the people. And if our states would pass the Sheriff Empowerment Act, then the federal agents would have to get permission by the sheriff to come into the counties.
Would that be...
My sheriff has told me that any time he ever comes to my house, he will always identify himself, he will never hide behind a mask, and he will show me the search warrant, and he, I, he is more than welcome to come in, given that scenario. If, with the Sheriff Empowerment Act, the federal agents hiding behind the mask would have to get my sheriff to come and knock on my door.
Let me just see how widespread the feelings that you've expressed are. Who else shares them? Who else would like to talk about that fear? If you've already spoken, do me a favor, am I seeing the same hand back there? Yeah, I thought I was. Go ahead, sir, we haven't heard from you.
A couple of things. I wanted to defend the people of this area, I work as a sales rep in this area, and this is some of the finest people in the world, really, because I've traveled around a bit, and quite frankly, I have more to fear from most people that I've met in New York City than anyone here, you know, to be quite honest. But, in another way, I also wanted to defend the media, parts of the media. What frightened me, from the government's standpoint, government inevitably wants as much power as they can get, and when I heard reports on Station Out of Detroit, WJR, about the president kind of sort of, but not really seriously saying, he blames talk radio in some far distant way for what happened, that threatens free speech. And the president was elected by these people, some of these people, okay? To represent this country, the Billerites, the Constitution, and what America represents, which is, partly, free speech. To say that, and to make it public, and a couple senators jumped on the bandwagon too, in all deference to the representative here, is threatening, to threaten free speech.
Did, did you want to pick up on the same theme?
I don't think it's talk radio, what I'm seeing, and let me just preface this by saying that I'm almost a lifelong resident of this county, and I just returned from a week in Oklahoma City about a month ago. I am heartsick about this, and I am heartsick that this path has led back to my home. But what I'm seeing is not so much talk radio, but what they say sometimes on some of these programs. It's welfare moms, it's affirmative action, it's divisiveness, it's name-calling. I am not afraid of my government, I am, however, afraid of these gentlemen.
Let me ask you, then, the same question that I asked them, because it's only fair. What is it about them that you fear? I mean, if, as it appears on the surface, it's a bunch of men and women who put on camouflage outfits and, and go out and engage in maneuvers with their weapons on weekends, and have educational programs, anything I'm leaving out, guys? What's, why do you fear that?
I think their point of view is very slanted. I think that if they were to take over, and I think that, that may be partially what they want to do, I would not want to live in a government with their, their slant, their point of view. I think they're very much against our own personal freedoms. What I'm saying is, is this divisiveness, this name-calling, affirm, these people on affirmative action, it's all the fault of the welfare mothers, these things that have been going on, it's not, it's not, well, as a history major, as a history graduate, I kind of relate it to the things that were going on in pre-Nazi Germany. It's all the fault of the Jewish bankers. It's name-calling, it's divisiveness. Instead of, instead of circling the wagons that some of the people in these areas have, saying this is a setup, let's see how the story pans out. You know, there's, there's two sides to everything. Let's come together as a community and wait. The government is not all evil.
Let me just, this gentleman came over to me during the last break and identified himself to me as, you're the station manager of the local radio station here?
Yes, my name is Bill Jackson, I'm the general manager of two radio stations in Carroll, Michigan. I'm concerned about both talk radio and the militia. I'm not necessarily fearful of it, because I can control talk radio, to a certain extent, as the licensee of a radio station. And I think what a lot of the concerns and anger that are expressed here is deep-rooted to a major social erosion in this country. I think there's major concern about both what our government does for us and does against us.
Tell me what kind of, what kind of programs you carry.
We carry, we carry, we call, carry talk radio on our AM station.
Who do, who do you carry? I mean, anybody that we, that...
Chuck Harders for the People.
Is that, what, what kind of a program is that?
It's a consumer political advocacy program.
Tough politically?
Yes.
Left of center, right of center?
Right.
Far right?
Far right.
Uh, is he the, is he the kind of person who, who makes disparaging comments about federal government?
Absolutely.
Raises questions about the, the right of the federal government to do what it does?
Absolutely.
Does he ever go beyond? I mean, does any one of these programs, that any one of you here has heard, and I put the question first to you, but I'd like to hear from anybody else who wants to address it, does, does any of these programs, by any stretch of the imagine, of the imagination, seem to be calling for some kind of physical action against the government?
They walk through that gray area very closely, and I'm concerned about it, because as, as the person responsible for the radio station and what we put on the air, I'm very concerned about it, because so many of these talk show hosts are on radio stations, we're a small radio station that covers four or five counties. I don't have nearly as much control of what that talk show host says on our radio station that I'm just as responsible for as our news director is, that's in our building every day. But the responsibility of the integrity, as far as journalism is concerned, and the reporting, and the influences, is still my responsibility.
Let me just go to this gentleman over here, we have about a minute before we have to take a break, sir. Do you have a mic?
Yes, I have a mic, Ted. First of all, you've answered your own question here tonight, Ted. Sand Lake County in the thumb of Michigan is a panorama of contradictions. You may not be aware, but, but the road you travel tonight is, you're not the first man from Washington DC that came to Decker. The only problem was, when President Nixon came, we had a bomb scare, and he couldn't stop here. That was before he resigned. We have a history in this county of being on safe ground. We're a conservative county, and yet, we open our arms to everybody. The president of the Michigan Farm Bureau, which is not exactly a liberal organization, lived in this county for years, and yet, when the NFO wanted to come in, we welcomed them. The president of the Farm Bureau, today, lives just a few miles north of here. We have leadership in conservative organizations, and yet, we are always open to those whose views aren't the same as ours.
Do you hear, though, the same thing that I'm hearing this evening? There is, and I don't recall ever having heard this in America before, there is a fear of one another, we're sounding afraid of each other.
Ted, I'm sorry, I'm older than you are, and I've heard this before.
Well, I'm, I'm...
In this...
I'm not sorry that you're older than I am, but...
In this county, and I'm the first one to admit, that I go to bed at night worrying about my, what have we got, Jenny, how many, eighteen, nineteen grandchildren? Because of the very thing that you're talking about, what I, but what I'm saying to you is, the people of Sand Lake County welcome you, and I think you're doing a service to the people across the nation by being here, in this community, and pointing this out, but what is going on here, I don't think is any different than it is across the nation. Now...
No, no, I agree with you. I, I wasn't suggesting that, that there was something unique about this fear that I'm hearing. We're hearing it about people who are fearing other Americans. Folks, we've got to take a short break. I, I know you still have something else you want to say, there's a young lady back here who wants to say something, and then we'll come to you. We're going to take a break, we'll be back in a moment.
This ABC News Nightline Special Edition, Trouble in the Heartland, will continue in a moment.
Pardon me, ladies, where are the tasty things we knew drew sweet? Isles one through eight, sir.
But allow me.
Oh, Magoo, it's a red squirrel day.
For the great taste of Nutrisweet.
A giant gumball.
Look for the swirl.
Yes, indeed.
Nowadays, my kids aren't the only ones making a statement. I'm making one too.
Right now, current Cadillac owners can save over fifteen hundred dollars when leasing a new spring edition DeVille. Make just one single upfront lease payment of eleven nine eighty-four, you'll avoid monthly payments for two years, and you'll save fifteen hundred fifty-two dollars.
My DeVille says it all, without me having to say a thing.
See your Cadillac, try statesman.
Ooh.
French vanilla.
Ooh.
You can tell how fresh and delicious our new flavored coffees taste.
Oh.
Without actually tasting them.
Oh.
Because the flavored coffees that smell the best...
Ah.
Taste the best.
Ah.
And we are back live once again from Decker, Michigan. You want to finish your point, and then pass the microphone to the young lady in front of you, who came to see me during the break.
Well, Ted, all I wanted to say was that we're a composite in this county and in this territory, and, as I said, we have lots of leadership and have had for years. I know that feeling exists, I know that it isn't fostered necessarily by things that go on in this county, but I think what we have here is a panorama of what happens across the United States. With one exception, this grassroots that you talk about, and nobody has mentioned the dreaded name of the guy that covers the airwaves, the radio airwaves, what's his name, Limbaugh? But what we have here, in this county, is a growth in another direction. If you just went around the room and said, how many new churches, how many church buildings are they erecting right now, you and I would both be surprised in a county of only forty-one thousand people. And I can guarantee you one thing, that in this territory, and some of these people here tonight will participate in it, this county will have one of the greatest world days of prayer on May fourth, if there's any place in this nation. I think that says a lot for it, and that's going to help heal what's going on.
Do me a favor, pass the microphone to that young lady. You, you wanted to tell me something about what's been going on in school.
Oh, yes, I don't think people realize how much this is affecting teenagers. My public high school has had numerous television companies calling, and the AP's been there, and they've asked questions such as, the, has the militia been recruiting? And that is just totally baffling, to think, they think that everybody up here knows something or is somehow involved. Our journalism class today did a survey, and it showed that only eighty-five, that eighty-five percent of our high school population knows nothing about the Michigan militia.
You mean even right now?
They, some know now, but they didn't before any of this. That means only fifteen percent knew. So, I just can't understand how they get that everybody is involved, because it's not true.
Mr. Olson, in, in a sense, can I just ask a question of your commander there? Mr. Olson, in a sense, and it is, it is something I have not heard referred to, and I'm not saying this in any malicious fashion, from a recruiting point of view, I would think that the attention that you've received over the, over the last few days has amounted to something of a bonanza, or am I misreading things?
I'll answer that. In fact, I'd like to go back and...
Wait a second, hold on just a second. Does Mr. Olson have a capacity to speak in his own behalf, or, or do you have to speak for him?
No, he can speak for himself, but I want to go back, because that young lady had...
No, just a second, do me a favor, answer my question. I'd like to hear from Mr. Olson.
We're paying a terrific cost for this, Ted. It's, it's a cost that we're not able to bear. The people in this room, they need to speak up and tell what frightens them. They need to tell the media that they've had enough of this, it's madness, and brutality will bring more brutality if justice is left out of the equation. This is, this whole thing is, is a nightmare growing larger, and the federal government sits out, watching all of this, gathering more and more strength. The president, Sunday night, when America was broken, at her weakest moment, torn between emotions of, of terrible sorrow and, and growing anger and bitterness, when America was so weak, he stumped for legislation and asked America to come close so he could hug them like a father, saying, we'll give you more security. All you have to do is give up more liberty. We're sick of it.
My understanding was that he was asking for increased anti-terrorism legislation. Now, you clearly, you clearly take issue with the language, I mean, you think...
I felt, I felt exploited. Now, I don't know if anyone else sensed that, but Benjamin Franklin was the one who said, anyone who will give up essential liberty for a little security deserves neither liberty nor security.
Where has your liberty been infringed? And I am asking you now personally. You have been, I mean, you've been on my broadcast twice now, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you were willing to come here this evening. I've seen you on practically every broadcast around, you're, clearly, your freedom of speech has not been inhibited in any way.
Listen, Ted, the Michigan militia corps, and I as the commander, we have, we have come out visibly and publicly, we've taken a tremendous risk, we have shown Americans that they can stand up, and they can speak out against their federal government, this government that continues to consolidate power. What we need to do is tell the government to stop and give the power... to stop and give the power back to the people, down to the townships, down to the counties, down to the states. Instead of absorbing freedom from the people, release the people. Let the people go. Listen, there was a, there was, there was a pathway, a pathway of tears when the great Cherokee Nation moved to Oklahoma. They were destroyed. There was another pathway called the Underground Railroad, and so did our truth. And that pathway led to Michigan. And the black people that came to Michigan escaped a tyranny. You see, there's pathways in America. And I believe here in Michigan, I believe there is a pathway of hope. And I believe that we, the people of Michigan, need to stand up. We are brave, courageous people.
Mr. Olson, I don't...
I know, I won't...
No, no, no. I don't want to limit you. I want to extract as much information from you as I can, but let's see if we can not make speeches. I don't know what you personally are afraid of.
These people need to tell you, Ted, what they are afraid of.
No, no, you tell me. They'll speak for themselves. I intend to turn to them as soon as you're through. But what is it you're afraid of?
I am afraid of our constitutional republic, a democracy limited, or putting limits upon government, of slipping into a totalitarianism where the government controls the people. We've enjoyed two-hundred-and-twenty years of a people controlling the government. And things are changing, and I think we sense it. I sense it. I sense it very deeply.
All right, Mr. Olson, we, I, there is literally a forest of hands going up. We're going to take a short break, and then when we come back, I will start moving around. And yes, I promise, I'm coming back here first.
We don't believe it.
We don't believe it.
That's the media.
All right, guys.
It started with the idea of giving truckers a better two-way radio system. Then with a war chest of three thousand dollars, they decided to take on the largest company on earth. When the smoke cleared, MCI had changed telecommunications forever. Where in today's world do you find such aggressive, fast-growing companies? Actually, there's a list of them printed every day. NASDAQ.
News Nightline Special Edition, Trouble in the Heartland continues, live from the Decker United Methodist Church in Decker, Michigan. Once again, Ted Koppel. Sheriff, it's nice to know the cruisers are out there. Thank you. This young lady wanted to make a point. Go ahead.
Hi, Ted. I'm Marty Hemke, and I live here in Decker and have been here for over twenty years. And I appreciate what the media is doing, but it's sometimes, it's like a knife, because it's informing me as to, like, this stuff with McNamara, you know, and how he felt during Vietnam, you know. It's like, it's nice to hear these things, but we really don't want to hear them sometimes. But I'm more afraid of them guys than I am the media or the government. I mean, it's, I feel like I'm at war every time hunting season comes around. But it seems that I don't want, I'm shocked at how many of my neighbors are really feeling so anti-government, and so, just, they seem so cold about everything that took place in Oklahoma City. And it just affected me so deeply. And to think that this evil is, like, permeating my atmosphere scares me. And I'm glad the media is letting me know about those guys, because I'm keeping my eye on them.
Let's move around. The gentleman in the back in the green jacket.
I'm Alan Yerkes in San Lake County. And the people that I've talked to, we're not afraid of the Michigan militia. We're not afraid of any right-wing organization out there that has a difference of opinion. That's what this nation is famous for, is being able to stand up and voice your difference of opinion. But what we are afraid of are the small radical groups that take it upon themselves to do something very violent like they did in Oklahoma City. And the message that people have conveyed to me is that it's time to let these terrorist groups know that we're not going to take it anymore. If you have a message, do it in a peaceful way. Get our attention peacefully. Demonstrate in Washington, or do whatever it takes. Don't take violence against us, because you're just alienating the people who you are trying to attract our attention.
But let me see if, let me see if I understand where you're coming from. When you're saying, "We want to send a message to the terrorist groups, we're not going to take it anymore", who do you want to be the carrier of that message for you? Who is responsible, then, for seeing to it that terrorist groups not carry out such things in the future?
Well, I think the citizens of this great country and the world in general needs to let people know that if you have a difference of opinion, then voice your difference of opinion. Have a town hall meeting. This is great. Everybody has an opportunity to speak and make their message heard. But, you know, don't blow a bomb off somewhere. That's just totally negative.
Let's go to the lady back there in the purple.
My name's Maureen Kraus, and it really amazes me that some of you people in this town are so small-minded, that the lady could state up there that the militia wants to blame the federal government, and they should wait to blame anybody until anything pans out. But how long did it take before they started pointing fingers at the militia, and nothing had panned out?
Keep going. Reverend, we should come to you. We are, after all, in your church, and gives me an opportunity to thank you for your hospitality. Please.
My name is James Renconter. My wife, Jean, and I, co-pastor of the Decker, Argyle and Chaboni United Methodist Church. And we're glad to give you this opportunity to express yourself this evening. But I would like to speak about repetition. Repetition is an excellent teacher, and I think when we talk about media, this is what we're talking about, a repetition. This evening, there have been a total of three hours on this subject, ninety minutes with this, and an hour and a half before we came on. Inside Story, and what was the other? Dateline? And...
I wish you'd, I wish you'd mention Primetime Live since that's on ABC.
Primetime Live. Okay, Primetime. That other network, okay. And it's the repetition, over and over and over again. And people watch television, and you know that. And this is, I think, what is creating the hype.
You think we're done with the story? You think the story is finished? I mean, first of all, they have yet to pull, I don't know, a hundred-plus bodies out of that building. We have yet to find out who committed this terrible crime. No one has yet caught John Doe number two. What I hear here is of sort of a ground swell, which I'm told is reflected nationwide, of concern. Some people even put it in terms of fear. You think we ought to let that story go just yet?
I'm not talking about letting it go. I'm talking about the editorializing that takes bits and pieces from here, there, and everywhere, and puts it together into a story that was not a story. It's bits and pieces from here and there.
What do you think is the story that's going to come out of this town meeting tonight?
The story is about people talking about where they're coming from, how they feel, and what's happening in their lives because of what they're seeing on television, reported over and over and over again.
My name is Linda Volz, and I kind of wanted to respond to Mr. Olson about, he wanted those of us that were here to talk about what we're fearful of. I'm fearful of individuals that are taking away my freedoms. With freedom, the freedom to bear an arm, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, comes responsibility. And some individuals in the United States are not willing to accept the responsibility that comes along with those freedoms. And now, for me to go into an airport, I have to go through a metal detector. For me to go into a federal building anymore, most likely, we're going to be searched or go through a metal detector. That's what I'm fearful of, because my freedoms are being taken away from me. And I'm not going to blame it on groups. I'm not going to blame it on particular people. But I'm going to say all of us need to be aware that our freedoms are being taken away. And I know one of the reasons we settled in this area is because of the Christian background that's here. And one thing that's not been brought out is that we would not have any more bombings, we would not have any more killings, if people let God into their hearts, and we began to treat each other like we want to be treated. And I think that's what we need to do, is not blaming one another, but we come together. If anything, if anything comes out of that tragedy in Oklahoma, it's by God, we all need to pray to God that nothing in our nation ever happens like this again, and that we learn from this tragedy, that we have to have one another to rely on.
Gentlemen in the back.
Amen.
I certainly agree with those comments, but I think the whole premise of much of discussion tonight leads me to some confusion, the whole premise that we fear the government. During the break, we were just chatting amongst ourselves right here, and we must be in a definite minority in this part of the building tonight, because we don't have fears of our government. We trust the system, we trust the government. We feel that if there's a problem with the system, we have a mechanism in place to deal with it, and that's at the ballot polls, when we go to cast our vote at any election that we take part in. And that's how we change the system, not through these other kinds of ideas or means that we've been hearing about tonight.
Let me just move it around to a few more people. A gentleman over here, we're beginning to run out of time. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to address why we should feel our, be in fear of our government. During the Iran-Contra affair, James Brooks was questioning Oliver North about the plan to suspend the Constitution of the United States. Dan Ilkroy admonished him and said that this should be, you know, conducted back in the back chambers. And Brooks tried again, and again, he was admonished. Now, to me, if there's going to be a plan to suspend the Constitution of the United States, I think the American people should be involved in this decision and decide what circumstances, you know, should rise to suspend the Constitution. The fact that they are doing this in privacy...
Let me, let me just stop you for one second, and see if you can give me a nice, concise answer on this. Who is trying to suspend the Constitution?
Well, basically, there's a lot of theories in regards to that.
I understand that. Who do you think is trying to suspend the Constitution?
I wouldn't want to say for sure without absolute proof.
Okay, in that case, let me, go ahead. If you have a short closing statement, go ahead and make it, because we're just about out of time.
In regards to the government, if they could get involved in this sort of activity, during the 1960s, we had the Contra Pro programs, where the government would infiltrate various groups. They were responsible for the killings of the Black Panthers, the Weathermen. And they were engaged in having some bombings take place. They'd infiltrate groups, gain the leadership capacities, send the people, and they would set off bombs. So, the government is definitely capable of engaging in this sort of conduct.
Okay, I hear you. I thank you. We've got to take a short break. We will have just a couple of minutes more of this broadcast when we come back, and we will be back in just a moment.
This ABC News, ABC News Town Meeting, Trouble in the Heartland continues, live from Decker, Michigan, with Ted Koppel.
Let's go right to our next question. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Ruth Shaw, and my husband and his family farm in the area. And first of all, I'd like to say to the Oklahoma City people that we're very sorry for what had happened. And I'd also like to say that we're not a bunch of militia people up here. In fact, I didn't even know the militia existed until I heard it on the newscast. And I just wanted to say to the country that we're just normal people up here, and we're just like everybody else, just normal people.
Are you surprised at some of the expressions of fear and concern that you've heard here this evening? I mean, in the sense that you haven't heard them just around town?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm not afraid of the militia. I never had heard of them before. And I'm not afraid of the government either. And I, I just, we're just normal people. I just feel like, I'm almost ashamed to say that I'm from Decker, because I feel like people think that we're really bad up here, and...
Well, don't be, because I think Decker's done itself proud this evening, and I thank all of you very much. Go ahead, sir. We're down to our last three minutes. Yes? You're, even so, even with the good Lord's help, you're still going to need a microphone.
Well, I can preach, so you can hear me.
All right.
I'm the chaplain to the chaplains in the militia. I want to tell the folks here tonight, there's twenty-five chaplains throughout the state of Michigan, from all different kinds of churches. There's at least fifteen to twenty chaplains who call me regularly from across the United States, all our brigade chaplains. So, I want to tell you that the militia is being watched. When the general asked me if I'd come aboard and be a chaplain, I said, "What do you want me to do?" He said, "Keep us right." And so, I want, and I want you to, and I want to tell the pastor, "Brother, if you want me, I'll come Monday, Sunday morning and sit on the floor there and answer every question your church has got. Our staff will come in every Kiwanis Club, every school, every, every place, because you don't know us, folks. When this lady paints us with a broad brush, and this lady, they're afraid of us, that troubles my heart. I lost a son in the Marine Corps. I'm a sixty-three-year-old grandfather. I've got grandchildren just like this gentleman over here, and like many of you."
I'm not being too strict, but when people are living in my backyard making bombs, and our paramilitary...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
That's frightening.
We are literally down to our last minute here, so just...
That's frightening.
So, just let the lady say what she's going to say, and then I'll let you respond, okay?
Okay. I don't understand. I mean, I don't want a war in my backyard. I don't want you guys training in my backyard making bombs. I don't want the cops around my house either, but they've been there. I mean, the last few days, seeing FBI and ATF trucks going down the road, I don't like it.
Madam, I really believe you're saying what America's saying, "I don't want." And that's the problem. I believe the problem is every one of us, because we've spent too much time in America saying, "I don't want. I don't want inconvenience."
But how many people here have voted every time they can vote?
But, you know, the militia...
You know what I'm saying? There's ways to change things without guns. I mean, that's our problem.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I've seen what guns do. I've seen it firsthand.
Madam, I have been on both ends of the gun.
Well, why do you condone it so?
I don't condone. I don't carry a gun.
How come on David Brinkley, you guys are so full of rhetoric?
So, you're not even allowing me to state my part here?
Go ahead.
Sorry, but...
What came on national...
We are already, we are already now going over our allotted time, but go ahead. I don't want you to feel that you can get a chance to finish. You go ahead and finish what you had to say.
What I have to say is, on the national television, hour after hour after hour, is a bombed building with tiny, bloody children and people. Following that is some radical statement about some movement in the country who's going to destroy and take over. And then immediately, because we have been absolutely open since April, comes video after video of our training, even taking my messages in chapel out of context to make me appear some raving preacher supporting these guys to go out and kill people. Oh, video after video, why? Because these secret people who are hiding in the woods and going to hurt people, they won't let you even know they exist. This is why we're in a uniform.
But we didn't know you existed.
This is why we're in a uniform. We want...
Well, okay.
I didn't know you existed, so you haven't been that open.
Folks, we certainly, after this week, know that the Michigan militia exists.
And get to know us before you judge.
And we will get to know you, and in part, we will get to know you, because one of the other nice things about having a free country is, we in the media are going to keep our eye on you, too.
Good.
All right. I thank all of you. I thank all of you. You have been enormously gracious, and you have shown that there is something other than terror and grief in the heartland. You've shown that there is hospitality and common sense and decency, and, yeah, a little bit of wackiness every once in a while, too. But that's true all over the country, and I'm very, very grateful to you for making us welcome here tonight. That's our report for tonight. I'm Ted Koppel in Decker, Michigan. For all of us here at ABC News, good night.
This has been an ABC News Town Meeting, Trouble in the Heartland, a special presentation of ABC News. More Americans get their news from ABC News than from any other source.
A bunch of men and women who put on camouflage outfits and go out and engage in maneuvers with their weapons on weekends and have educational programs. Anything I'm leaving out, guys? What's, why do you fear that?
I think their point of view is very slanted. I think that if they were to take over, and I think that that may be partially what they want to do, I would not want to live in a government with their slant, their point of view. I think they're very much against our own personal freedoms. What I'm saying is, is this divisiveness, this name-calling, these people on affirmative action, "It's all the fault of the welfare mothers," these things that have been going on, it's not, it's not, well, as a history major, as a history graduate, I kind of relate it to the things that were going on in pre-Nazi Germany. "It's all the fault of the Jewish bankers." "It's all the fault of the Jewish bankers." It's name-calling, it's divisiveness. Instead of circling the wagons as some of the people in these areas have, saying this is a setup, let's see how the story pans out. You know, there's two sides to everything. Let's come together as a community and wait. The government is not all evil.
Let me just, this gentleman came over to me during the last break and identified himself to me as, you're the station manager of the local radio station here?
Yes, my name is Bill Jackson. I'm the general manager of two radio stations in Carroll, Michigan. I'm concerned about both talk radio and the militia. I'm not necessarily fearful of it because I can control talk radio to a certain extent as the licensee of a radio station. And I think what a lot of the concerns and anger that are expressed here is deep-rooted to a major social erosion in this country. I think there's major concern about both what our government does for us and does against us.
Tell me what kind of programs you carry.
We carry, we call, carry talk radio on our AM station.
Who do you carry? I mean, anybody that we...
Chuck Harders for the People.
Is that, what kind of a program is that?
It's a consumer political advocacy program.
Tough politically?
Yes.
Left of center, right of center?
Right.
Far right?
Far right.
Is he the kind of person who makes disparaging comments about federal government?
Absolutely.
Raises questions about the right of the federal government to do what it does?
Absolutely.
With the government, doesn't our system, hasn't it just demonstrated to all of us? Haven't we demonstrated to ourselves how well the system works? Anyone want to take me on on that? Yes, sir.
Ah, yes, my name is Charles Spitzel and I don't fully agree with some of the stuff Kim said that, you know, like we were able to rectify a lot of things by the election. I says, some of the, oh, like out in Washington where they elected or put in term limits in Washington State and then we had like Tom Foley and some of the other elected officials try to challenge that in court or like in California, Proposition 187 where state officials, state employees said they weren't going to comply with it because, and like I say, it's kind of left in limbo. I says, the voters elect, vote on something, the majority says they want to do something and then it turns around. I says, you know, lawyers and judges and stuff derail what people want to have done. Another case in the state of Michigan where a few years back, we said we didn't want to pay for Medicaid-funded abortions, but just recent, a few months ago, President Clinton was trying to force our governor by means of holding up Medicaid funding and stuff to supply these, you know, or do, turn around and go against what the people of our state decided that we didn't want to spend our money on.
So, you have a sense that on the one hand, the public expresses its view, you put the people that you want in Congress and then unfair means are used to undermine what you sent them there to do?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else feeling that way? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Xenobod and I get around the state, give a lot of seminars and things like that. I see a lot of frustration with our government and when you say there was a revolution, that now we've got new changes and everybody sits back to look and see what these changes are going to be. And to get back to the first question, do they believe that the government is maybe conspiring behind this Oklahoma theory? We're seeing a lot of evidence that possibly. We go back to a lot of innocent people that have died throughout the United States and we have a lot of question and that starts back around Wounded Knee where they had military hardware out there, not only Waco, but there was a Don Scott, there was Gordon Cale. And we have a lot of questions. We say, "Why is this happening? Why did that blow up the way it did?" We don't know who's behind it, we don't condone it and we certainly want to see the people punished who's responsible for it, but at the same time, there's been a lot of murders in our nation and I don't know who's behind it. We can see our government running around with masks on their heads. This scares the American...
...addiction here and that's properly recognized as part of our government.
But there's nothing wrong with that, right?
Certainly not.
I mean, that's the way the system is set up.
In some cases, as long as the law is being followed and as long as the Constitution's being followed, certainly they can't go in there without due process and execute a search warrant without having one.
Right.
Due process has to be followed in all cases. We're very cognizant of that on the local level. I found, at least what I saw, and I certainly didn't see everything that went on, that due process, meaning search warrants, were properly obtained in this case. Now, the response, you know, with the media and so on, and I don't want to change the subject, Ted, but...
No, that's all right. Anywhere you like.
I think that it's a little premature at this point in time to say that all three of these men are connected with this case.
Oh, and indeed, two of them have not been connected with the case.
Two have not been charged.
You're quite right. The Nichols brothers have not been charged with being directly connected with the case.
And I think that we need to afford due process before we convict in our minds or anywhere else across the nation. Certainly the tragedy, and that's all it can be described as, that happened in Oklahoma City. I don't believe there's a person in this building tonight, and I won't speak for everyone, but that doesn't feel that, wants that due process is served and the individuals have been adjudicated as guilty that are caught, that there should not be punishment handed out to them. But the process has to be done through adjudication, not through the media or through whatever sense it is. And I know that the media doesn't portray themselves as that. But we need to hold individuals responsible for their actions, not groups and paint them with a broad brush.
Right.
Not citizens of an area and paint us with a bad brush, us because I'm part of this, and not religions, not nations.
Mr. Olson, this makes a nice segue to you because, A, yours clearly, the Michigan militia is one of the groups that it could be said has been painted with a brush. And also, my understanding is that you're feeling, in fact, you've told me so, that the only appropriate legal authority is the sheriff, right?
I would agree with that, yes.
You're not going to read me anything, are you?
No, no. This is a letter I received, a letter I received today. It only has two lines on it. It comes from Tulsa, Oklahoma. "We are coming for you, pray for your soul. Thank you, media."
Mr. Olson, let me just interrupt you for one brief moment and we are going to have to go to a commercial in a second. We'll come back and you can speak. Have that blue mic, would you? There you go.
My name is James Renconter. My wife, Jean, and I, co-pastor of the Decker, Argyle and Chaboni United Methodist Church, and we're glad to give you this opportunity to express yourself this evening, but I would like to speak about repetition. Repetition is an excellent teacher and I think when we talk about media, this is what we're talking about, a repetition. This evening, there have been a total of three hours on this subject, 90 minutes with this and an hour and a half before we came on. Inside story and what was the other, Dateline? And...
I wish you'd mention Primetime Live since that's on ABC.
Primetime Live. Okay, Primetime, that other network, okay. And it's the repetition over and over and over again and people watch television and you know that. And this is, I think, what is creating the hype.
You think we're done with the story? You think the story is finished? I mean, first of all, they have yet to pull, I don't know, 100-plus bodies out of that building. We have yet to find out who committed this terrible crime. No one has yet caught John Doe number two. What I hear here is of sort of a groundswell which I'm told is reflected nationwide of concern. Some people even put it in terms of fear. You think we ought to let that story go just yet?
I'm not talking about letting it go. I'm talking about the editorializing that takes bits and pieces from here, there and everywhere and puts it together into a story that was not a story. It's bits and pieces from here and there.
What do you think is the story that's going to come out of this town meeting tonight?
The story is about people talking about where they're coming from, how they feel, and what's happening in their lives because of what they're seeing on television reported over and over and over again.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda Volz and I kind of wanted to respond to Mr. Olson about, he wanted those of us that were here to talk about what we're fearful of. I'm fearful of individuals that are taking away my freedoms. With freedom, the freedom to bear an arm, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, comes responsibility. And some individuals in the United States are not willing to accept the responsibility that comes along with those freedoms. And now for me to go in, most likely, we're going to be searched or go through a metal detector, that's what I'm fearful of because my freedoms are being taken away from me and I'm not going to blame it on groups, I'm not going to blame it on particular people, but I'm going to say all of us need to be aware that our freedoms are being taken away. And I know one of the reasons we settled in this area is because of the Christian background that's here. And one thing that's not been brought out is that we would not have any more bombings, we would not have any more killings if people let God into their hearts and we began to treat each other like we want to be treated. And I think that's what we need to do is not blaming one another, but we come together. If anything, if anything comes out of that tragedy in Oklahoma, it's by God, we all need to pray to God that nothing in our nation ever happens like this again and that we learn from this tragedy that we have to have one another to rely on.
Gentlemen in the back.
Amen.
I certainly agree with those comments, but I think the whole premise of much of discussion tonight leads me to some confusion, the whole premise that we fear the government. During the break, we were just chatting amongst ourselves right here and we must be in a definite minority in this part of the building tonight because we don't have fears of our government. We trust the system, we trust the government. We feel that if there's a problem with the system, we have a mechanism in place to deal with it and that's at the ballot polls when we go to cast our vote at any election that we take part in. And that's how we change the system, not through these other kinds of ideas or means that we've been hearing about tonight.
Let me just move it around to a few more people. A gentleman over here, we're beginning to run out of time. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to address why we should feel be in fear of our government. During the Iran contra affair, James Brooks was questioning Oliver North about the plan to suspend the Constitution of the United States. Dan Ilkroy admonished him and said that this should be, you know, conducted back in the back chambers. And Brooks tried again and again he was admonished. Now, to me, if there's going to be a plan to suspend the Constitution of the United States, I think the American people should be involved in this decision and decide what circumstances, you know, should arise to suspend the Constitution. The fact that they are doing this in privacy...
Let me just stop you for one second and see if you can give me a nice concise answer on this. Who is trying to suspend the Constitution?
Well, basically, there's a lot of theories in regards to that.
I understand that. Who do you think is trying to suspend the Constitution?
I wouldn't want to say for sure without absolute proof.
Okay, in that case, let me, go ahead. If you have a short closing statement, go ahead and make it because we're just about out of time.
In regards to the government, if they...
Certainly the tragedy and that's all it can be described as, that happened in Oklahoma City. I don't believe there's a person in this building tonight, and I won't speak for everyone, but that doesn't feel that, wants that due process is served and the individuals have been adjudicated as guilty that are caught, that there should not be punishment handed out to them. But the process has to be done through adjudication, not through the media or through whatever sense it is. And I know that the media doesn't portray themselves as that. But we need to hold individuals responsible for their actions, not groups and paint them with a broad brush.
Right.
Not citizens of an area and paint us with a bad brush, us because I'm part of this, and not religions, not nations.
Mr. Olson, this makes a nice segue to you because, A, yours clearly, the Michigan militia is one of the groups that it could be said has been painted with a brush. And also, my understanding is that you're feeling, in fact, you've told me so, that the only appropriate legal authority is the sheriff, right?
I would agree with that, yes.
You're not going to read me anything, are you?
No, no. This is a letter I received, a letter I received today. It only has two lines on it. It comes from Tulsa, Oklahoma. "We are coming for you, pray for your soul. Thank you, media."
Mr. Olson, let me just interrupt you for one brief moment and we are going to have to go to a commercial in a second. We'll come back and you can speak again. I can show you a dozen letters like that that I receive every week of my life. You know, there are a lot of fruitcakes out there. I'm sorry that you receive letters like that, but believe me, I routinely package them and send them off to the FBI. Go ahead, if you want to get up and respond to me.
Can I respond?
Go ahead.
All right. When I talked earlier, we were talking about two different feelings, anger and fear.
Right.
I don't believe the people that I know and the people that I'm familiar with in the Michigan militia corps are angry so much at our government. We're fearful of our government. We're fearful of the terrorism going on in the American people.
Very good point. Hold the thought, I'm going to come back to you. We're going to take a short break. When we come back, we will discuss the issue of why anyone in this country needs to be afraid of its own government.
This ABC News Nightline Special Edition, Trouble in the Heartland, will continue in a moment.
There's a rumor. One of the big houses just entered the bidding against us for Marcus Belfry's next book.
Alan's with him now. Let's email him.
Done.
No, let's fax it.
Done.
What they did to that man up in hills, how can you shoot a woman and a child? There's got to be a way to deal with it. There's been police officers that have felt threatened and they shoot an individual when there's how many police officers around? What's going on with our country? Why?
Is it just me or do you not see that there would be a world of difference between, and let's set aside whatever differences you and I might have about Waco, but in Waco there was a situation where David Koresh and the Branch Davidians had in effect barricaded themselves in a building. They were known to have a lot of weapons. Set aside whatever you may feel about them personally, they were refusing to come out and they had children. It seems to me there was a world of difference between what happened on that day and the idea of parking a truck filled with 4,000 pounds of explosives in front of a federal building that has men, women, and children inside. Or am I missing your point?
Well, when you're dealing with people, you deal with them as people, not as cattle or whatever. And they're trying to cover up things, it looks like to me.
All right, I'll tell you what, we're going to take a break now and when we come back, I'm going to start with a subject that I think you may feel a little more comfortable with and I will feel less comfortable with, how you feel the media has mishandled the story of Decker, Michigan. We'll be back with that story in just a moment.
This ABC News Town Meeting, Trouble in the Heartland, brought to you by Ford and your Ford dealer, will continue in a moment, live from the Decker United Methodist Church in Decker, Michigan.
What did they say to get you to leave AT&amp;T?
Heard about the big savings I can get you...
Wednesday on ABC.
...deal about life in the public eye.
And this has really gotten out of hand.
The Barbara Walters special, The Price of Fame, now on Wednesday.
It isn't just anyone who can set up a deal in Toshkent or Almaty or Istanbul or Bombay. And it certainly isn't just any...
This ABC News Town Meeting, Trouble in the Heartland, continues live from the United Methodist Church in Decker, Michigan. Once again, Ted Koppel.
I suggested that some of you may have felt misused by the media over these past few days and I also suggested to you that when we came back from the break, I'd give you a chance to express some of those frustrations. Mr. Bean, I understand you want to say something.
Yes, my name is Art Bean and I'm with the...
Here we are, instead of making...
Here, where instead of making change with ballots, that we make them with bombs. I really fear that, you know, I hope this isn't the beginning of that. And I guess that's the big question that I've had, and I've met with some of the "we the people" groups and that in this area, and discussed this with them. That's the one thing. The other point, if I could, just briefly--
Sure.
I can't criticize the media very much with their coverage, I understand the pressures they're under to deliver stories. It is agonizing sometimes when they report something and you find out that it's wrong. But the one thing I would like to say is, if there-- I fear that the image of the people in Sanlao County, to the people who watch TV, is that, you know, we're all a bunch of off-the-wall people who condone these type things. Obviously, almost everyone who lives here, as your beginning said, are hard-working, honest, good people, and I just would hope that that's the image that America sees of the people that live in my district, 'cause I've represented them for a few years now. There's no finer people on the face of the earth.
Well, and for the rest of this program, it's our aim to get to meet as many of them as possible. Now, as I say, we invited members of the Michigan militia here, and I've spoken to these gentlemen beforehand, we're gonna try and keep the emphasis on these folks, and little less time with you, but I did promise you you would have a chance to say anything you wanna say.
You were asking about anger towards the media.
Yes.
And I think as we talk about what's going on in America, we've got two emotions we're dealing with, anger and fear, and in most instances, we deal with them a little bit differently. My anger is towards the media. Now, when I explain the anger, I also have to explain how I'm gonna respond to that anger because of who I am. Again, I'm Ray Southwell Chief of Staff with the Michigan militia corps. We have irresponsible journalism occurring in this country against the Michigan militia corps. We need to expose it, that's how-- I'm angry at that, and I will make every attempt to expose it, that's how I'm dealing with that anger.
Ray, you're waving Time Magazine around, get to the point, what is it you're gonna-- what is it you wanna say about that?
I'm not gonna--
All right.
There's things--
Well, I mean, when you're holding a magazine up, I'm assuming you're gonna make a point about it.
It's on the ground.
All right.
I'm trying to expose that that particular irresponsible magazine has written things that were untrue about the Michigan militia corps.
Let's be specific, because you and I--
Well, I'd have to--
You and I chatted before the program, and I told you, I have no objection if you wanna show the picture, there's one picture--
Let me finish first, dealing with the anger, then I'll go back with that, because--
Go ahead.
Again, I'm angry, so I'm dealing with the anger by exposing it. That's how I'm dealing with the anger, I wanna make sure that's clear. I'm also angry at the Southern Poverty Law Center--
A few years now, there's no finer people on the face of the earth.
Well, and for the rest of this program, it's our aim to get to meet as many of them as possible. Now, as I say, we invited members of the Michigan militia here, and I've spoken to these gentlemen beforehand, we're gonna try and keep the emphasis on these folks, and little less time with you, but I did promise you you would have a chance to say anything you wanna say.
You were asking about anger towards the media.
Yes.
And I think as we talk about what's going on in America, we've got two emotions we're dealing with, anger and fear, and in most instances, we deal with them a little bit differently. My anger is towards the media. Now, when I explain the anger, I also have to explain how I'm gonna respond to that anger because of who I am. Again, I'm Ray Southwell Chief of Staff with the Michigan militia corps. We have irresponsible journalism occurring in this country against the Michigan militia corps. We need to expose it, that's how I'm angry at that, and I will make every attempt to expose it, that's how I'm dealing with that anger.
Ray, you're waving Time Magazine around, get to the point, what is it you're gonna-- what is it you wanna say about that?
I'm not gonna--
All right.
There's things--
Well, I mean, when you're holding a magazine up, I'm assuming you're gonna make a point about it.
It's on the ground.
All right.
I'm trying to expose that that particular irresponsible magazine has written things that were untrue about the Michigan militia corps.
Let's be specific, because you and I--
Well, I'd have to--
You and I chatted before the program, and I told you, I have no objection if you wanna show the picture, there's one picture--
Let me finish first, dealing with the anger, then I'll go back with that, because--
Go ahead.
Again, I'm angry, so I'm dealing with the anger by exposing it. That's how I'm dealing with the anger, I wanna make sure that's clear. I'm also angry at the Southern Poverty Law Center for what they've put out, because they painted all militias or any civilians in camouflage with the same brush. There's no documentation of any racism in the Michigan militia corps, but the Southern Poverty Law Center has gone on record that there is. I'm gonna, I'm angry at them, but I'm gonna respond in an appropriate way, because there will be a lawsuit brought against them. So that's the anger that I feel, okay? But there's also fear, and we respond differently with the fear. And when you start talking about fear, then I'd like to talk again. Now, would you like me to clarify?
No, very good, actually, I would just like to identify your commander who's sitting next to you, Mr. Olson, if you'd just be good enough to stand up for a second, and we'll give you a chance to talk just a little bit later, but I just want folks to know that you're here. And there was a gentleman over here who raised his hand, you have a mic? Go ahead, sir.
Is he on?
Yes, it is. Mr. Olson, I'll come to you a little bit later, thank you.
My name is Al Squire, and I hear your anger, but I also have anger for what happened in Oklahoma City.
You cannot believe that they would have had anything to do with something like this?
No, I can't.
Had you ever, I mean, last Friday, when I spoke to one of your other neighbors, and clearly, a number of other people have told the story of James Nichols in particular, expressing, and this gentleman before the program corrected me, and I'm grateful to him for doing it, it wasn't a question of James Nichols saying that he wanted to kill President Clinton, but that President Clinton ought to be killed. Is that a fair way of stating it?
Quote-unquote, "He isn't fit to live, let alone be president."
Okay, "He isn't fit to live," and that, and thank you for correcting the quote. Is that appropriate?
No, but at one point, excuse me, at one point or another in our life, we all say things that you don't mean, and you might have the wrong person pick up on that. When I took psychology in college, it says the worst thing to do is get angry. You say things you don't mean, and feelings are hurt.
Can you understand how the-- No, let's stay on the media for a while. Can you understand, I'm coming in here as a reporter, okay? I don't know any of you, and I hear, on the one hand, here's a man who says President's not fit to live. On the other hand, I'm hearing that he and his brother and McVeigh have been experimenting with little bombs. Then we discover that Mr. McVeigh was apparently in some way connected, at least that is the charge that is being leveled against him. I'm not asking you to render a judgment in journalism here, but can you see why that story interests us, and why that is a subject of some interest to the rest of the country?
Oh, yes, I can see that.
But you think it's unfair?
I can look at the money aspect of it, hey, this is a big headline. But then I can look at the harm that it can do if this big headline isn't the truth.
Let me just, there was a young man in the back who had raised his hand, do you have a microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, jump in.
My name's Ben Hobbs. I think, for the most part, the media's done a good job in covering this. The only problem I have is that the radical right, in many ways, by some editorial people, is being compared to the moderate or mainstream conservatives. The Republicans are, for the most part, in a way, against the federal government in that we think they spend too much, or they tax us too much, but I'm involved in the Republican Party, and I've never heard it suggested that we bomb a federal building or anything like that, so I think that the comparison between those two groups is unfair and sometimes misleading.
No, I think you're absolutely right, and I think we have to be very clear that when we are--
Show that he was acquitted and walk, show him walking out of the courthouse a free man, you showed him in handcuffs, and the news media--
Whoa, 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 we didn't show Randy Weaver at all. We showed Randy Weaver? I'm sorry, I guess I wasn't watching closely enough.
So, because of the fear of our federal government, the militias are rising up all over the country to defend our homes and properties. The Michigan militia corps has instituted, initiated the Sheriff's Empowerment Act in the states. States are rising up, they have passed 10th Amendment resolutions telling our federal government to cease and desist. We want our state legislatures to put teeth into that and empower our elected sheriffs. Our sheriffs are our first line of defense, they're the only police agency that is responsible directly to the people, and if our states would pass the Sheriff Empowerment Acts, then the federal agents would have to get permission by the sheriff to come into the counties.
Would that be--
My sheriff has told me that anytime he ever comes to my house, he will always identify himself, he will never hide behind a mask, and he will show me the search warrant, and he, I, he is more than welcome to come in, given that scenario. If, with the Sheriff Empowerment Act, the federal agents hiding behind the mask would have to get my sheriff to come and knock on my door.
Let me just see how widespread the feelings that you've expressed are. Who else shares them? Who else would like to talk about that fear? If you've already spoken, do me a favor, am I seeing the same hand back there? Yeah, I thought I was. Go ahead, sir, we haven't heard from you.
A couple of things. I wanted to defend the people of this area, I work as a sales rep in this area, and this is some of the finest people in the world, really, 'cause I've traveled around a bit, and quite frankly, I have more to fear from most people that I've met in New York City than anyone here, you know, to be quite honest. But in another way, I also wanted to defend the media, parts of the media. What frightened me from the government standpoint, government inevitably wants as much power as they can get, and when I heard reports on Station Out of Detroit, WJR, about the President kinda, sort of, but not really seriously saying he blames talk radio in some far distant way for what happened, that threatens free speech. And the President was elected by these people, some of these people, okay? To represent this country, the Billerites, the Constitution, and what America represents, which is partly free speech. To say that, and to make it public, and a couple senators jumped on the bandwagon, too, in all deference to the representative here, is threatening, to threaten free speech.
Did you wanna pick up on the same theme?
I don't think it's talk radio what I'm seeing, and let me just preface this by saying that I'm almost a lifelong--
The fear of our federal government, the militias are rising up all over the country to defend our homes and properties. The Michigan militia corps has instituted, initiated the Sheriff's Empowerment Act in the states. States are rising up, they have passed 10th Amendment resolutions telling our federal government to cease and desist. We want our state legislatures to put teeth into that and empower our elected sheriffs. Our sheriffs are our first line of defense, they're the only police agency that is responsible directly to the people, and if our states would pass the Sheriff Empowerment Acts, then the federal agents would have to get permission by the sheriff to come into the counties.
Would that be--
My sheriff has told me that anytime he ever comes to my house, he will always identify himself, he will never hide behind a mask, and he will show me the search warrant, and he, I, he is more than welcome to come in, given that scenario. If, with the Sheriff Empowerment Act, the federal agents hiding behind the mask would have to get my sheriff to come and knock on my door.
Let me just see how widespread the feelings that you've expressed are. Who else shares them? Who else would like to talk about that fear? If you've already spoken, do me a favor, am I seeing the same hand back there? Yeah, I thought I was. Go ahead, sir, we haven't heard from you.
A couple of things. I wanted to defend the people of this area, I work as a sales rep in this area, and this is some of the finest people in the world, really, 'cause I've traveled around a bit, and quite frankly, I have more to fear from most people that I've met in New York City than anyone here, you know, to be quite honest. But in another way, I also wanted to defend the media, parts of the media. What frightened me from the government standpoint, government inevitably wants as much power as they can get, and when I heard reports on Station Out of Detroit, WJR, about the President kinda, sort of, but not really seriously saying he blames talk radio in some far distant way for what happened, that threatens free speech. And the President was elected by these people, some of these people, okay? To represent this country, the Billerites, the Constitution, and what America represents, which is partly free speech. To say that, and to make it public, and a couple senators jumped on the bandwagon, too, in all deference to the representative here, is threatening, to threaten free speech.
Did you wanna pick up on the same theme?
I don't think it's talk radio what I'm seeing, and let me just preface this by saying that I'm almost a lifelong resident of this county, and I just returned from a week in Oklahoma City about a month ago. I am heart sick about this, and I am heart sick that this path has led back to my home. But what I'm seeing is--
Small community. I mean, all of a sudden, to have the full glare of the whole nation's attention on you. Do you think the media is doing it deliberately, or do you just think it's shabby journalism, that we're not doing our jobs well? There's a difference, in other words, between being incompetent and being malicious. Which do you think we are?
Half the time, I think it's just maliciousness, and half the time, I think it's just incompetence.
What do you think we're out to do? In other words, when you say maliciousness suggests that we have some goal in mind, do you think that the media in general is out to blacken this town's name?
Maybe not the town, but some of the people in it. That's the feeling we have heard in Tuscaloosa and Sanlao County.
Is that a feeling that anyone else here shares? Ma'am, you're shaking your head, Sarah, maybe you just passed the microphone over, and if you wouldn't mind, would you stand up and give your name, please?
Nancy Adams. I was upset with the way little things, little negative things were brought out and really played up on television.
Like?
I'd rather not discuss that, but no, just, I noticed with several of the news, I knew several of the people that were interviewed, and it was, there could be just one little bad thing in the sentence, and that was played upon, and I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair that the media judge a person.
Now, who do you think has been judged? You're talking about the Nichols brothers--
I'm talking about the Nichols brothers.
And Jim McVeigh.
Tim McVeigh.
Tim McVeigh, I beg your pardon.
I'm talking primarily about the Nichols brothers.
Yeah. These are your neighbors?
Yes.
You know them?
Yes.
You like them?
Yes.
You cannot believe that they would have had anything to do with something like this?
No, I can't.
Had you ever, I mean, last Friday, when I spoke to one of your other neighbors, and clearly, a number of other people have told the story of James Nichols in particular, expressing, and this gentleman before the program corrected me, and I'm grateful to him for doing it, it wasn't a question of James Nichols saying that he wanted to kill President Clinton, but that President Clinton ought to be killed. Is that a fair way of stating it?
Quote-unquote, "He isn't fit to live, let alone be president."
Okay, "He isn't fit to live," and that, and thank you for correcting the quote. Is that appropriate?
No, but at one point, excuse me, at one point or another in our life, we all say things that you don't mean, and you might have the wrong person pick up on that. When I took psychology in college, it says the worst thing to do is get angry. You say things you don't mean, and feelings are hurt.
Can you understand, you're saying we wanna send a message to the terrorist groups, we're not gonna take it anymore. Who do you wanna be the carrier of that message for you? Who is responsible, then, for seeing to it that terrorist groups not carry out such things in the future?
Well, I think the citizens of this great country and the world in general needs to let people know that if you have a difference of opinion, then voice your difference of opinion. Have a town hall meeting, this is great. Everybody has an opportunity to speak and make their message heard, but, you know, don't blow a bomb off somewhere, that's just totally negative.
Let's go to the lady back there in the purple.
My name's Maureen Kraus, and it really amazes me that some of you people in this town are so small-minded, that the lady could state up there that the militia wants to blame the federal government, and they should wait to blame anybody until anything pans out, but how long did it take before they started pointing fingers at the militia, and nothing had panned out?
Keep going. Reverend, we should come to you, we are, after all, in your church, and gives me an opportunity to thank you for your hospitality, please.
My name's James Renconter. My wife, Jean, and I co-pastor--
Is that microphone working? I'm not hearing it, try that blue mic, would you? There you go.
My name is James Renconter. My wife, Jean, and I co-pastor the Decker, Argyle, and Chaboni United Methodist Church, and we're glad to give you this opportunity to express yourself this evening, but I would like to speak about repetition. Repetition is an excellent teacher, and I think when we talk about media, this is what we're talking about, a repetition. This evening, there have been a total of three hours on this subject, 90 minutes with this, and an hour and a half before we came on. Inside story, and what was the other? Inside Story, and what was the other, Dateline? And, uh...
I wish you'd, I wish you'd, I wish you'd mentioned, uh, Primetime Live since that was on ABC.
Primetime Live. Okay, Primetime. That other network, okay. And, uh, it's the repetition, over and over and over again, and people watch television, and you know that, and this is, I think, what is creating the hype.
You think we're done with the story? You think the story is finished? I mean, first of all, they have yet to pull, I don't know, a hundred-plus bodies out of that building. We have yet to find out who committed this terrible crime. No one has yet caught John Doe Number Two. Uh, what I hear here is of, of sort of a, a ground swell, which I'm told is reflected nationwide, of concern, some people even put it in terms of fear. No, I think you're absolutely right, and I, and I think we have to be very clear that when we are talking about, it's, it's not fair to talk about conservatism, republicanism, uh, as though it were interchangeable with the extreme right wing. And, and it is, you know, I do wanna focus a little bit, uh, while we're here this evening on, on the extreme right wing. I see you shaking your head. Are you just agreeing with something I'm saying, or...
Everything.
Well, go ahead. Jump, jump, jump on into the conversation.
Well, I'm, I'm Representative Kim Reed, and I just, I don't, don't understand, uh, one thing I don't understand is why some of these fraction groups feel so threatened by their government. I understand the Waco, uh, problems. I understand, uh, some of the other problems that the government maybe has, has, uh, delved into.
Let me just clarify, this is your region?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, but I think that the last election, if it, if it didn't teach us anything, it should've taught us that people in this country still have the ability, through the ballot box, to completely change the direction that their government goes. And in this state, I, I would hope that the last two or three years of, of us, um, in this state would show that we, we will listen to, as elected officials, and, uh, we can change the way we do business, and I, I just hope that, uh, we're not heading into a, a series of time here where we, where instead of, uh, making change with ballots, that we make them with bombs, I, I really fear that, uh, you know, I hope this isn't the beginning of that. And I guess that's the, the big question that I've had, and I've met with, uh, some of the, the, uh, We the People groups and that in this area and discussed this with them. That's the one thing. The other point, if I could, just briefly...
Sure.